Pray with me if you will. Our Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together today to do your business here at Central Texas College. Help us guide, direct, nurture, and help all of those that we run across and their extended families. We ask in this festive time that we remember our spirit of Thanksgiving. Help us spread the good news around the world and help those in need and be of assistance and guidance. And first of all, a model to them that we can, that they can see that we are following in your footsteps. Forgive us when we lose sight of the path. Help guide us back on the back path that we may fulfill your honor and glory. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me in honor of the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We have a quorum present and this meeting is being recorded. Members of the public may access the meeting through the Central Texas College website. Item two is to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting that board trustees helped on opening the twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two. A copy's been provided, you're in your read ahead.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as published. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we have an opportunity for members of the public to suggest the addition of topics for discussion or to address topics of interest with the presentation limit of three minutes. Is there anyone present who'd like to address the board? None, then we'll go to the chancellor's report.
Uh, thanks sir. Yes, I have the SACS C O C annual meeting that a number of us attended this past week uh in Atlanta. And Dr. Garrett is the lead for our SACS reaffirmation. So, Dr. Garrett, would you mind saying a few words about what we're doing?
Sure, sure thing. Thank you Chancellor. As you have heard, we are the class of twenty twenty-five and we will be reaffirmed in twenty twenty-five, no doubts whatsoever on that. But um the process takes several years to uh go through, to gather the information and do the work necessary to submit for our reaffirmation. And in that process, we had to establish a five-person leadership team to take to SACS for the orientation meeting that was held. Um as the chancellor mentioned, I guess, the week before last. And um that leadership team that went to that includes Dr. Carter representing as a CFO. They wanted the CFO there. Um, Dr. Valentine, she's our Director of Institutional Effectiveness. Uh, Dr. Adie was with us. Um, she's couldn't be on the five initial because we only have five slots, but she is part of the leadership team for C T C. Uh, the chancellor has had to be represented. And the faculty representative for the leadership was Dr. Angela Reese. I'm adding two more faculty to the leadership team to divide up that because that role is going to be so large. And of course, myself, I had to be there too as a SACS liaison. But the work is going to um continue throughout. We have to submit our initial report, I believe, in March of twenty-four. And so we have to do a lot of writing, getting ready for that. Then um they'll have an off-site uh committee meeting and then we'll host the onsite uh later that year, so.
I think that you, the biggest violations that that uh we saw, you want, you want to talk about any of those?
Uh, a lot of the violations or sanctions that were placed, um, you know, it's not a pretty sight when you're, when you're at SACS at the end. You, you, they announce all the, the schools that were reaffirmed, but then they announce the ones that are in trouble too. And your name is up on the board. So I always tell people, I don't want my name up on that board. I don't want C T C up there. But a lot of the sanctions that were placed were um due to faculty qualifications, uh both for program level as well as um individual course teaching. You know, managing program or teaching courses as well as finances. A lot of the sanctions were because of schools having finance issues and then some of them were on outcomes, student outcomes.
There were a number on governance.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is the board, so. But our board, our board is excellent. We don't have that problem.
We do our evaluations every year.
Is there a heads-up kind of situation to let people know that they're gonna make the board?
Oh, you mean when they, when they publish that? No, there's really not. You, you show up and it, you know.
Yeah, well, you have, you know, you've got multiple opportunities to respond. And I think you probably have a good idea whether or not you're going to be sanctioned by the time it happens, but, you know.
You're just hoping you're not.
Yeah, right.
But it, yeah.
I, I, I'm not worried because we have such a great administration faculty and students that I know we're not ever gonna end up there, but I'm just curious if red light comes on.
It takes, takes a lot of work and some of our sister community colleges close to us. Were, were shown and I mean, it, it, Dr. Garrett is gonna, over the next year, so she's gonna, gonna uh brief the faculty and department chairman and the staff of what's going on. And it, and it's serious, uh, it's serious work, so.
Yeah. It's gonna take the whole, um, i- i- it's gonna be very inclusive. Everybody's gonna have to get involved with writing um that for our reaccreditation, but we'll be, we'll be good.
Thank you.
Was there anything that you saw that caused you shortness of breath? That you know that, you know that we, there is some work to be done in that. You don't have to name it, but.
Yes, there are areas that we, we do need to look at and, and reinforce and, and get, um, get some additional data on and work through, yes. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Garrett. Service award ceremony uh this, this Friday at uh nine o'clock and I, I think uh all of you are gonna be there, I hope. And there was.
I won't be, I won't be present. I have to be out of town, so I'll miss them.
Debbie, put one of these in her file or not? But, well, it's just a, just to let you, let you know. Uh, library services update, Dean Purser.
Hi, good afternoon, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm here with Miss Cynthia Osir. She's our Outreach and Reference Librarian and we're gonna give you a brief overview of library services.
All right, well, um, our mission is to help our students, help them get prepared for life, also to help our faculty. And so very quickly, we're gonna show you exactly what we do at the library. So, we are on call for these students every single day, even Thanksgiving and Christmas. We do this because we want to do this. We help them out, we can do their paper reviews, we can answer their questions. They can get in touch with us in any kind of a way. So we will work with them. Um, it's not like they can't get in touch with us. We do videos to help them understand how to do research, how to write their papers. We also create research guides. We, we do library seminars where they can register for these, one-on-one or in-class or group, small group. We do all of these for them. We have an eagle closet where they can borrow clothes and then we give a lot of the clothes away. And our high schoolers have discovered that closet and they love that closet. So uh we also encourage their creativity with a Writers Guild and it's not just writers, artists, photographers, everybody. It's all about creativity. We have fifty-two members in that group, so it's really big. This is not the entire group. We also help our faculty with the Faculty Resource Center. We have Miss Tammy Simmer up here and she knows about that room. It's a wonderful place for faculty to come and just be, you know, quietly do their work. We also have um pre-service workshops. We do like um uh burnout sessions for them, you know, avoiding burnout. We also can do in-service workshops. We showcase faculty publications. So you were talking about faculty publications. We can do events for them. We also encourage our students with poetry slams, byways, we can do it with self-help uh events. We partner with departments, the Mayborn Science Theater. We have a monthly workshop that we do with them for constellations. We work with K N C T for their pledge drives and we do podcasts. We also go help our little, little ones over at the um Child Development Center. We do story times for them. We also um, we offer uh events for professors if there's something they love to do. We say, let's do it. You like fossils? We'll do fossils. What this does is it gives the, you know, anybody who's watching these an opportunity to see our professors in action. So it's a great way to see how cool our um professors are here. Then we also will find speakers all over, everywhere, because we're global. And so we do our events globally and that way they can enhance some of our subjects. We offer stress relief for those of, people who need stress relief. We partner with Fort Hood on a lot of um events. And right now we have an amazing thing that we're doing in twenty twenty-three. It is military history. We've been going all over Central Texas interviewing veterans and we're getting their story. Because we feel that the best way to learn military history is through life stories. And so that's been an amazing project and we're gonna have a lot of that in the spring. And we also work with um libraries and museum consortiums in uh Central Texas and we work on projects together. We also share like, you know, if they've got some gaming equipment for, you know, we can go ahead and they'll loan it to us. So we work on projects together, including the Eclipse. Okay, that was my portion.
Oh, okay, thanks. Okay, uh, study spaces is first. Uh, study rooms are very popular, as you can imagine. Students have the ability um to reserve a room online ahead of time. They can click on the listing or they can use, we've implemented this semester, a new live interactive map. They can look at the location, uh, the room capacity, the amenities in the room and let us know in advance if they need any kind of accommodation. Some stats right there, last year, uh thirty-one hundred study room checkouts. And then for this year, this quarter, um eleven-ten. So we should surpass last year's checkout on that. Continued students, okay. Multimedia lab, we have about thirty computers for student use in there. They can use it for research, testing, um, things like that, also scanning, printing. Laptop and iPad checkout is available. We have two stations in the library with Zoom text and JAWS software for the visually impaired. Uh, quick stats on that, just under two thousand last year. For patrons that use the lab, seven hundred and thirty-five laptop checkouts. Next one please, Allied Health Room. Uh, this is a neat space. Um, obviously the Allied Health students use this, twenty-six anatomy not models for checkout. We have a visible body online database, has the three D models, animation, learning modules, and the V R, virtual reality capability on their personal devices. So that's really neat. Couple of quick facts, we're open sixty-two hours a week. Our gate count uh pre-COVID was about eleven thousand annually and we're on track to meet or exceed that this year. Um, she mentioned this, that we're available three hundred and sixty-five days to students as we have classes um all the time and worldwide. Last year we averaged about five hundred and twenty-two questions per month and seven hundred and seventy-seven papers uh reviewed annually. Uh, continued quick facts, over forty thousand print books, over three hundred and fifty thousand ebooks and uh little over forty-one thousand streaming video titles are available to everyone, again, worldwide through the databases. We also have our Avita Colt Pavi Memorial Library Scholarship where we award five hundred and fifty dollars both in the spring and the fall. Okay, so library service, we fall under uh section eleven in the principles of the accreditation. As you can see there, eleven, one point two and three. We work with the academic departments on their individual accreditations as well to make sure the library portion is met. Ensure all faculty, students, uh, and staff worldwide have access to library resources. Teach them how to use it in order uh for the students to successfully complete their degree. Last slide. Okay, Metra Library Staff, this is a bulletin board in our break room of our awesome staff. And so I just wanted you to see their faces and invite you to come over to uh see their faces in person and uh tour the library. If you haven't been over, things as you can imagine have really changed in the last uh ten years, so um you're welcome anytime. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just a comment, thank you, Dr. Garrett, for making this happen. When I met these two ladies doing their, my walk-around, I forgot what the event was. But I was so impressed with both of you and your energy and your desire to help the students. I, I, I thought about you probably every day since because you, you were willing and to be available. Three sixty-five, I, that I couldn't wrap my head around that because you are not the librarians I had when I was.
We all sit around and read books all day.
Yeah, not the same people. Not the same people. But you, but you, your commitment to the students and the fact that you review their papers. I was shocked and I wanted my colleagues to hear about all the support that you provide the students. So I'm glad you're here. I'm very proud of you guys, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, enrollment report, fall enrollment and spring enrollment.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, okay. It was nice to see y'all again after Friday night. Hope everybody enjoyed the ceremony.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I was asked to speak on the fall enrollments and also give an update on the spring enrollment. So in your packet, you should have two enrollment reports. One is for C T C worldwide, um, worldwide for fall. And the other packet is uh for spring comparison today. And I'll go over the um the Texas number, the fall enrollments first, okay? This is the Texas total enrollments for the regular fall semester. And so any classes that started between August the fifteenth and December the fifteenth, their enrollments are listed here. And we do have a slight decrease of uh three percent of students and, and actually a two percent decrease in course enrollments, okay? But the positive part of this is central campus, Fort Hood and the correctional facilities all had increases. So it's a, it was decreases in service area and distance learning that pulled us down. But I think that's a positive note that probably it indicates that students are coming back to the classroom. And outside Texas, our, our C and I campuses, Europe and the Navy and Continental and distance learners outside Texas, those numbers declined five percent. Both in the number of students and the number of course enrollments. Not included here on, in the slides, I wanted to go over our, our contact hours and semester hours because Mr. Liberty said semester hours are the most important. Because that, that's where your tuition comes in, okay? And for, for our regular semester, we had a two-point, a two-point zero decrease in semester hours. And we had a two-point-three percent decrease in contact hours. For state reporting purposes, which is a different set of dates, okay? We had uh the two-point-six percent decrease in semester hours and two-point-eight in contact hours, okay? And the state reporting dates, our fall state reports have already been certified. That goes on like after the census date of the regular summer sessions. And so our census date, uh, our state reports was something like September that was on the, one of the reports. Let me see. So that's from July the ninth through September the seventh. So some of those fall enrollments that we reported for fall will actually be reported to the state in the spring, okay? And bring, hopefully bring up our numbers, okay? Any questions about the fall enrollments? Okay, we'll move on to the spring comparison. Okay, uh, for the spring, because our spring runs from January the first to like May fifteenth, I use the state reporting date. So there's a little bit of overlap here because it gives you a better picture where we are. Because the spring semester, the January start, January seventeenth is our largest start date, okay? And right now, we have a three percent decrease in the number of students and a two percent decrease in the course enrollments. But again, central campus, Fort Hood and correctional facilities had increases while the service area and distance learning had, did not, okay? And these are the Texas reportable uh semester hours and contact hours that we, we are at right now. And so there's just a very, very slight decline there if you look. Okay, we have forty, forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three semester credit hours versus forty-seven, eight ninety-five uh from last spring. And on, uh, on this one, this is our, uh, let me see. I have so many slides here, I have to think about it here. This is our central campus enroll, these are our central campus enrollments, central campus. And you can see our central campus number of students is, is up by uh actually uh twelve percent student increase. And the co, the course enrollments are up by twelve percent also. So we have a twelve percent increase in students and of course enrollments for the central campus, okay? And this is our fall, uh, our fall enrollments. This is for Fort Hood, okay? And they've had a, uh, they, they're slightly behind, okay, for the spring. But I have no doubt that they will catch up because the Army, the Army doesn't allow you to register until sixty days prior to the courses. And the Army not at two-point-zero portal launched and reopened in the first part of October. And there are a lot of soldiers still trying to learn how to navigate that system. And this is our correctional facilities. And it basically, in the spring two thousand twenty-two, there is basically nothing offered at the correctional facilities. I think those thirty-nine enrollments had to do with an experimental program, but we already have eighty-eight students for spring so far. And the correctional facility, their dates are off a little bit, okay? And so those numbers should increase, but sometimes they do not start their term until like a week after we do. So their numbers won't be included in the s, the state reports, they'll probably be included in the summer. But actually that represents a five hundred and seventy-seven percent student increase, but it's kind of on a smaller scale, okay? Uh, these are enrollments for a service area for spring to date and they are down and I do, um, I do believe it has a lot to do with the dual credit enrollments. Because there are other schools coming in into the service area that are, you know, teaching dual credit and there are other options that the schools select for students to complete college work, okay? And our distance learning, right now we have a decrease in the number of students and the number of course enrollments for the spring, okay? But um, regist, we have, right now, we had about ten, we had about eight classes start December the twelfth yesterday. So those numbers won't be reflected in here. And then the K Center, they have a lot of individual self-paced courses and they have a lot scheduled. We had like twenty-five classes scheduled to start, uh, you know, from December the twelfth on, okay? So the fall enrollment should pick up a little bit, okay? And hopefully the spring enrollments, our spring does start uh January the seventeenth. So when we come back from the holidays, we'll have two weeks of very intense reg, registration and let's hope so. Any questions?
So at what point will you be in a position to give us current numbers, like update these numbers? Um, you, you're saying it begins January seventeenth. So how far into the, that um spring, I guess, that you, the registration takes place? That you will be able to bring us up to date?
Okay, okay. We, for the state, there are two different dates that we use for state reporting purposes after February the first. I can tell you where we were spring, this, this year compared to spring last year for state reporting purposes. Now for all the entire spring, we have class start dates every month up and through like the middle of May. So I wouldn't be able to give you a complete picture of just what we call the institutional semester dates until June.
What I, what I envision being able to do as a board member is to take this report you have given us today. And each time you meet with us, I should be able to make some adjustments up or down with the same report. So what I would like to see us do, I, I'm not advocating every month, but I think the updates needs to come more frequently than they have in the past. Is that reasonable?
Sure.
It's definitely reasonable. Be glad to do so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
The central campus increase was the, if I was following uh correctly, the lone positive of increases.
Correct.
Is there some special reason that we were able to attract more to central campus?
Dr. Adie, you wanna try to address that? I could, fir, first of all, the, the school districts hadn't start, haven't, hadn't started uh enrolling yet. And we were faced with the possibility that a lot of those schools were being uh inundated, if you will, by the four-year universities who can give those courses that we do for free or, or a, a reduced tuition rate. And uh, so Dr. Adie, do you wanna piggyback on any of that?
Yes, so we're specifically addressing service area. We have other um universities and other colleges that um are offering courses. We have um come to realize that school districts look for a whole selection of programs to, for their students to choose for dual credit. Um, and so certainly we are visiting with superintendents, we're working with the foundation on scholarships that we can offer students to offset some of the tuition and to be more competitive. So that's one of the things we work on as far as the service area.
Also looking at reductions and, you know, if they have an instructor out there and the school district's willing to pay the, pay their uh, their salary and they, they're qualified to teach dual credit, then we can give them a reduced tuition rate. Uh, it's competitive with these schools that are coming in for free and we, we can't do it for free. We are closing, we, we are shutting down some sites. We shut down some of our continental sites and we're looking at those again and trying to figure out, is it, what, what, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna actually shut them down or, or move, uh, or move them in some other direction? But that, those things are under consideration right now and she's shut down, I think, three or four already, so.
I, I didn't mean that as a derogatory question or comment. It was intended to capitalize on the positive aspects of our central campus growing.
Well, I mean, we have, everything's here. The students are starting to come back now. Uh, we're, we're pushing that every day with the local, two school districts, Colina, Copper's Cove. And so, uh, they're seeing that, those increases. And I think students finally decided that, yeah, they could go to work and make fifteen or eighteen dollars an hour or twenty-one dollars an hour. And why did they have to go to college? I mean, that really is the line, so. But I think they're, they're starting to realize that, that they can do that. Plus our adults are now starting to uh get eased up in, in their things and they can come back to school. So, you know, our average age is what, thirty, thirty-two years old, something like that, so.
I just think it's great that uh we're getting more people out here.
Well, we're doing lots of things and you heard from the library and there, there are other departments on this campus that do wonderful, great things to help these students and they're, and they begin to realize it and they come. One of the things we, I hate to say this, but community colleges aren't real popular with, with the young students coming out of high school. They, they wanna go off to university where they have sororities and fraternities and football teams and bands and, you know, all of those things that, that they do. And even the community colleges that have some of those things are having difficulty with their student enrollment. And I can name a few of those, but, and, and they're suffering too. They're trying to figure out now what are they gonna do? Because they don't have the enrollments to continue with the baseball teams, the football teams, the basketball teams, you know, the ladies softball teams and those things. And uh, so they're, they're, they're really struggling with that. But what, uh, uh, I, I think as, as kids in town, our social media is kind of working, I think, against us. You know, we thought for a minute that social media was the answer to get the word out to all these young people. But what happens is in social media, because community colleges have a stigma, you know? They, they, they're not looked at the same as University of Texas or Baylor or Rice or A and M. And so I think that a lot of times that works against us because those kids see that and they don't wanna commit to us because now it's on social media. And their friends are gonna, oh, so you're just going to C T C. Oh, you're just going to Temple College. Oh, you're just going M C C, you know? So, but we're starting to, to work through that and around that with the school districts and uh the counselors. I think we've done a great job. Dr. Uh, Garrett has reached out to those counseling staff and she's made visits and had programs over there. So we're working with those counselors to try to, you know, we are part of the game and they're starting to realize that. And their, their classmates that are doing dual credit are, are picking up and the early college high school. And so these young folks are saying, hey, you know, they're getting ahead of me. So when they go off to college, they're already a junior and I'm starting to, why, why wasn't I part of that? So all of those things are coming to play. So all of those things are coming to play, but.
If I could just add, we have a couple of places that approached us for new programs. So we are in the process of finalizing an agreement with Richard Milburn Academy in Colleen to offer dual credit courses, so the students would be coming on campus and taking courses with us. We're also expanding the offerings with KISD and Copper's Cove ISD. So there seems to definitely be an interest in, in expanding the programs that we currently have.
Good.
And that's really where the big number is.
Yeah.
Great. Know the, of the colleges that are coming in, you know who they are that are coming into our area to offer the.
Oh, yeah. The, the, we have service areas that were set up by the legislature, and, and I guess originally back in, back in the seventies when all that was established, they were, they were supposed to be policed by the coordinating board, but the coordinating board was never a policing agency, and they really didn't pay much attention to it. So nobody really policed it. We, we kind of did it ourselves, and we had regional, regional boards that met and said, you know, you shouldn't be in this territory. But truthfully, if, if they want to come in, there's nothing we can do to stop them. Well, then the legislature recently passed some, some rule that allowed them to come in. So we have some community colleges that are out in our service area now, and I've talked to them, and Dr. Aide and other folks have talked to them, and I've said, hey, look, you know, you're not supposed to be in here. If you don't get out of our service area, there's nothing to stop me from going into yours. And I can, I can offer courses in Comanche just as easy as I can offer them in Camp Casey, Korea, you know? So don't, don't push us. And so, but the four-year universities are the ones that we can't say or do anything about. And they have money, and they come in and they, they do it, they're trying to get the freshmen back that we've taken away as dual credit enrollment programs. And so those are the ones that really are hurting us. But with this new funding model that we're trying to get through in legislation, there will be a provision that we, that will, we will be made whole if we can give a reduced tuition for students who are on a reduced lunch or, or a free lunch program. So, and that's, that's huge in our, in our service area. I, I would guess it's forty to sixty percent of those kids are, would qualify. So that will give us that, that provision, so. There's a lot of moving parts to this.
Right. I appreciate that, because your explanation shows the extensive effort that our people are making, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Sandoval, eighty-eighth legislative session. Quick update?
Good afternoon, Sherman Weaver, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Yanopoulos. As we anticipate the eighty-eighth legislative session, I look forward to keeping our leadership informed on legislation that impacts Central Texas College. Since November the fourteenth, approximately one thousand two hundred and eighty bills have been filed, and Central Texas is tracking approximately a hundred and six to date. Some of the bills filed include tuition and fee bill statements provided to students, free tuition for youth in foster, student access to certain academic records, support service programs for students such as Texas Promise, polling locations at institutions of higher education, state information technology, credential offered by public and junior colleges, excuse colleges, minimum wages, employment leave by certain family members, and various political subdivision that we may fall under that have to do with various reporting requirements. Also, as Chancellor mentioned, the Texas Commission on Community College Finance is recommending that the Texas Legislature commit a significant amount of money for a formula that includes student financial aid and targeted investments in community colleges' capacity. Specifically, they're looking at rewarding community colleges for positive student outcomes. Those are outcome-based funding model with measurable student outcomes. These student outcomes will include graduation and transfer rates, credentials of value and credentials earned for high-demand fields and certifications. Chancellor also mentioned that it's an increased need-based financial aid and work-based learning opportunities that will help provide support to students that, that come in, that require the free lunch, and, and that fall into that category. State funding also would be come in to ensure all colleges have funding for instruction and operation that recognizes cost differences due to student needs and college size. Now, the base bill hasn't been filed yet, but, but those are some of the things that are looking to put in there, and as courses we go, that'll change. Hopefully, it doesn't change much, but hopefully, we can look at some of those things because there's still a lot of discussion that needs to be had that has to do with how we're going to provide those credentials of value and how we're going to rate them. In addition, Representative Hugh Shine indicates that number one, his number one legislative priority is a hundred percent disabled veteran property tax exemption. On numerous occasions, CTC has asked to be included in this legislation through the years. We've done that again. I am happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Sandoval, would you comment on the meeting with Senator Birdwell on the tax exemption?
Yes, Chancellor Yanopoulos had meeting, had good discussion with Senator Birdwell regarding the disabled veterans exemption. And to him, it was pretty darn easy, and of course, we both kind of laughed because that's what we've been discussing in the last four years that I've been here. I said, look at the legislation. I said, all we have to do is include community colleges, you know, public junior colleges in there statewide, and/or if we didn't do that for the statewide, we could bracket it for our area, you know, because we're here at Fort Hood. So it was pretty easy to him, and he's also very much in favor of backing that, which is all we need to do.
He's a disabled veteran.
And he's a disabled veteran as well.
So one of, one of Mr. Sandoval's tasks next week is maybe the week, week after we come back from Christmas, to get with Senator Birdwell, make sure that thing gets pushed in. But he wrote in his notebook and said he'd take care of it. Any, is that all?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Rudy. Okay, we've got videos. No, I'm sorry. Board of Trustees, May sixth, twenty twenty-three elections. Ms. Haven?
Yes, the college is scheduled to have a trustee election on May the sixth, twenty twenty-three, with two places up for reelection. Place six, currently held by Mr. Armstrong, and place seven, currently held by General Weaver. The first day to file will be January the eighteenth, it's a Wednesday, through the last day is Friday, February seventeenth at five o'clock. And I'll bring an order of election to the January Board of Trustees meeting to get the election started process, and we'll have a joint resolution with the cities and the school district coming as well. Any questions?
Okay, moving on to, thank you, Ms. Haven.
Thank you.
Pictures of the month. First one, Fort Hood, Dean Herr. You have the stage here.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Chancellor. Greetings on behalf of Fort Hood and Continental. So on Thursday, December eighth, we had our Fort Hood Christmas luncheon. It was a Willy Wonka theme, as you all can see. We had our own personal Fort Hood Willy Wonka. In attendance from Army leadership, we had Major General Michael Keating, Deputy Commander General Three Corps in Fort Hood. We had Colonel Chad Foster, Garrison Commander Fort Hood, and we also had Greta Bucciato, Garrison Deputy to the Commander. So during the party, we actually gave out, or we handed out Wonka bars, so everybody had the opportunity to get a Wonka bar, but only five special people was able to get the golden ticket. So as you can see, the Chancellor is standing there with our five winners, and Ashley, the Major General Keating's wife, Ashley, was one of the prize holders, so was excited for that. Any questions?
Next picture. Who's on the pictures?
Oops, did that, okay. On November thirtieth, we had our SAP ceremony. SAP is for, is application and products. It is a transition program for our soldiers that are on Fort Hood or throughout worldwide, actually, actually transition from all over to come and take that program. It's a ten-week program, so we had seventeen students actually completed, completed that program on the thirtieth. So we're looking forward to them to transition and have civilian jobs, some working at Google and some working at Microsoft. So we look forward and excited for their future in their careers in SAP. Any other questions?
Next picture.
That was great. Thank you.
Okay, fall graduation. Dr. Garrett.
Fall graduation. Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much, Board of Trustees, for those of you that could attend. That just demonstrates the, the support we have for our students and, and how we are so interested in their success and their completion. And Reverend Towers and Mrs. Coley, thank you for blessing our students during the ceremony. It was wonderful to have the invocation and benediction by the board members. Appreciate that. All of the speakers at graduation were so inspirational, and they were funny, too. Faculty, the, the Major General Keating and Command Sergeant Major, they were all wonderful and very relatable, and I think the students enjoyed it. I enjoyed their speeches. They loved shaking hands with the students. I don't know if you saw, well, you can see one of the pictures. They, they did the fun selfies with, with a lot of the people that had the fun hats decorated, and they just had a blast. And the students, I think, enjoyed it. We, we certainly enjoyed it, and I appreciate all of the support. The tone was definitely set by Dean Fisher. You know, he does a wonderful job, so thank you so much. And it just gave a very relaxed atmosphere, made a nice graduation. So some facts about it. We had a hundred and forty-nine graduates walk across the stage. We had a hundred and eighty-seven say they'd be there, but that's not, that's not bad as far as coming down. That's about the same amount. We had a hundred and fifty last fall, so we're continuing at about that, that amount each fall. But worldwide, I think, Dr. Welsh mentioned this, for fall, worldwide, we awarded seven hundred and eight diplomas. So that was wonderful. And then if we count all the, from twenty twenty-two, everybody that, the awards we get gave, twenty-two hundred and forty-three completions, we awarded completions. So that's good, especially with the new funding model we'll be under. So I'm happy, happy that we have that many students completing and, and be able to move on with their lives.
And Hooton and Harlan, is that right?
Hooton and Harlan.
The faculty member that spoke, I waited around but to, to make my comments to her, but I, she was involved with some other people. I thought her reflection of what the students had been through was probably one of the most honest, most enjoyable I've ever witnessed, not just to hear, but any graduation. I, she did an outstanding job.
She did.
Of reflecting on, on what those students probably were thinking. So please pass on to her that I was definitely impressed with her presentation.
She was wonderful. She was wonderful. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Okay, next picture. Who do we have?
Oh, you did it, Rudy, sorry. There we go.
CTC, please. Clip always one.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before I begin, I want to commend the young men and, and women who are going through our academy. This is challenging time to be a police officer, and these guys are stepping up to the plate when it really counts, so my hat's off to them. We run four academies a year. Three of them are daytime classes, they're full-time academies, forty hours a week, and one of them is part-time academy. We average about twenty hours a week. Daytime academies are twenty-two weeks, the nighttime academy is forty-four. Starts in January, ends in December. We accept both self-sponsored and agencies, recruits hired by agencies. Our recruits come from as far north as Hamilton County, and as far south as Travis County, as far west as Brown County, and far east as Mylum County. We service about sixteen counties regularly. Some of the cadets, they room here on, on the, on the campus, others commute. Some of our nighttime academies, our nighttime cadets, they work full-time, they commute an hour and a half each way to get here, ten class for four hours, and then, then they go home. So their dedication is exemplary. The academics is extremely rigorous, it's not a regular college class. If they score below seventy on any exam, they have to retake it, and they have the two chances to make an eighty or above. At the end of each semester, we take a snapshot of their semester average, and if it falls below an eighty percent, then we have to dismiss them from the academy. And in addition to the academics, we have to pass several skill-based units, the driving course, defensive tactics, traffic stops, farms, and they have to demonstrate that they can perform these in an acceptable manner to, to maintain the academy. After graduating from the academy, they have to pass their T-CO exam. They have six months and three attempts to pass it. If they can't pass it after their third attempt, then they have to re-attend the entire academy. I'm happy to report that all of our cadets this year have passed their T-CO exam, with the exception of one young man, and he's elected to make his final attempt in January. December second, we had our daytime academy graduate. There were seventeen students in that, and then the night academy was nine students.
When's their next graduation, Cliff?
It's going to be in June, first, first week of June. Now, yeah.
They do a wonderful job, got a great academy.
Yeah, we do.
And you have, you have a, still have a contract with Dallas Airport?
We do. We also, we also get other soldiers who get our early release that, that attend our academy. They're still in the military, but they attend the academy full-time.
I appreciate receiving the invitations. I have been able to attend some, but not the most recent one, but in the past. The individuals that you say they have three attempts, but you currently have one that's going back for the second or third attempt, what do we do to, is there anything that the college, maybe you're already doing it, but is there any support given to that person to assist them?
Yes, ma'am. We, we allow them to come back on campus. We provide study material for them. We, we open up quizzes, we'll analyze their test results, and we'll try to focus, you know, their study attempts.
Great, that's great.
Trying to get a hundred percent. Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
Uh, next picture. Who we got? Oh, Tammy. Come on down.
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to share. December eighth, we celebrated two nursing graduations. This particular picture is our licensed vocational nursing penning. This is the last of our twelve-month program. So if you'll remember, we are going to be launching a nine-month LBN program to help facilitate more nurses out quicker. And so this, this group was the last of the twelve-month. So in fall of twenty twenty-three is when we will admit our first nine-month group, and we are expecting thirty to thirty-five in that group. So that's a good class size for the LBN program. And then this is our associate degree nursing penning. This group, we graduated forty this session, and we are expecting anywhere from thirty-five to forty for spring, and then we'll have another entry in fall. One of the things that's interesting about this, well, there's two things interesting about this particular group. So we offer a HESI exam, and the HESI exam is an exam that gauges the progress and their exit knowledge. So throughout the program, we'll do one to gauge, and then at the end, we do want to see what their strong areas are and if they're going to be able to be successful on the NCLEX. It gives us kind of a precursor to, right before they take the test, to see if we can't help them a little bit more before the licensure exam. And for the first time ever, we had two students that made a one hundred on the HESI exam, which, that is a very difficult exam to take. It's actually, I believe, a little higher knowledge base than their licensing exam. So first time ever, two students scored a hundred, which was amazing. So first time ever, two students scored a hundred, which was amazing for for the program itself. Those students are gonna do exceptionally well on the licensing exam. But the other interesting thing is the picture up, uh for me, it's the top right. For you, it's the top right as well. Um so this this picture with the chancellor is with one of our nursing student graduates. And um this particular student happens to be a veteran, but she's also a paramedic. She's also a firefighter, and she attended our articulation program. And so she was a part of a program where we uh articulate the student with what certifications they have, and then we add on the nursing component so that they then can get their licensure. And so um we have others, but she was very special in that she had all of these things going for her at the time of graduating, and now she'll be a future nurse, so. We do want to thank Chancellor Yanopoulos for coming to give out the coins. The students loved them. Chancellor Yanopoulos was at both graduation ceremonies and gave the students a chancellor coin, a challenge coin. And so that was very special to these graduations, so thank you, sir. And then the one thing that both programs will face this next year is the new next-gen licensing exam. So NCLEX is changing their licensing exams. It's going more to a scenario-based exam. And so the faculty are taking professional development, going to conferences to learn about the next-gen exam. So we'll see how we're doing right now. Our pass rates are over the national standard. We hope to keep it that way, but every now and then, when a new exam comes out, we have some growing pains. So we'll see how that goes, but we expect it to go well. We're preparing the faculty well for it, so. And I have one more slide. And then we did uh at the last meeting, discussed a little bit about the licensed massage therapy program. The one thing I did want to share that I didn't before, uh well, we we are accredited now. So we are accredited through the Commission on Massage Therapy Association. But we will be offering two cohorts of licensed massage therapy program every year, October and January. And so we'll have two entry points. Is there any questions for me?
Now, y'all are gonna need a nurse someday, so.
We're trying to get him out. We're trying to get him out. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Uh next. Oh, Dean Fisher.
Let's talk music here. On Wednesday, the thirtieth of November, our Fine Arts Department hosted yet another free midday music break concert. Driven indoors by the weather, this event, again orchestrated by Ms. Linda Halbauer, featured, pictured top left, the CTC band led by Professor Michelle Palmer, and pictured top right, the CTC choir directed by Dr. David Thomas. Pictured top center is student soloist Kenny Moreco, who sang a contemporary tune titled "Grown-Up Christmas List." And then bottom center is student Erin Gannaway, who accompanied by the band, impressed the audience with her rendition of the classic "Have Yourself a Merry Little Christmas." Speaking yet more of music, our Fine Arts Department is delighted to announce a record six CTC students and one additional alternate were selected as members of the twenty twenty-three Texas Two-Year College All-State Choir. Having wowed the judges during in-person regional tryouts back in mid-November, our six All-State Honors singers will join their voices with other two-year college students from across the state of Texas to form a one-hundred-student-strong choir scheduled to perform at the Texas Music Educators Association Conference in San Antonio in February. Pictured top center is choir director Dr. David Thomas. Left to right, tenor one Esteban Lopez Flores. Soprano one Crystal LaRoco. Bass one Kenneth Moreco. Tenor two Thomas Gutierrez. Soprano two Ashley Demers. And alto two Erin Gannaway. Pictured bottom center is tenor one alternate Jovita Castro. Thank you.
So if you wanna see some more of the band and the choir tonight, I think, is is that correct?
Yes, sir. They're participating in the in the bell tower lighting.
Bell tower lighting and all that, which I have tickets for all of you all here on board if you. Culinary arts.
Hi, thank you for the invitation. Uh these are the students from PSTR twenty-three oh seven. Uh this is the final for K-degrading. And these students are preparing for go-to-a-competition on March at Austin. Uh this competition, we have been doing it for already six, seven years. Uh each student put about forty hours of the time to do it beside classes. Uh obvious reasons, they cannot take it home to do the homework. They have to do it at school. Then uh they spend a lot of time with me. We have Sharon, uh Sharanda Payton, which is on your uh left top right. Um she did uh, she win uh best flavor. And she did the woman's right cake. Uh she did the sculptor on cake, uh face. I don't know if you guys can distinguish it, but it's a lot of work for them to do all that. Uh the flavors that she win was a yellow cake with a strawberry filling and was a vegan cake. Later, I have Gabriela Gabriela Alvarez, which is on the second picture on the left. Uh she win people's choice. Uh the title of her cake was uh five fifty dinners. And the flavor of her her cake was banana and a political flavor, uh which also was a vegan flavor. Uh right now is very, getting very popular, all these special diets, including vegan. Then all our students started focusing on into that areas. Uh later, the winner, the winner for best in show uh was Cassandra Shuckleford, which she get uh best in show. Uh she did like um, um like uh the cake was a Victorian age, was more like a steampunk cake. And the flavors was chocolate cake and peppermint and espresso filling.
Peter, where's our cake? We want a tasting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Next time I will bring some.
Well, I gotta brag on you a little bit. If you've never gone down to see what these students do. I was down there one day and I walked in, I saw they had a cake with the flowers on it. And I went over and I looked at it and I said, "Lepita, how do they keep the flowers so fresh?" She said, "They're not real." I was look, I mean, it's incredible what you all do.
Yes, they they learn a lot of skills and we're very grateful that um the baking program has grew up a lot. Uh baking program was open on two thousand seventeen, and right now has more enrollment than the savory program. Then it's it's amazing what they do in there. Thank you.
I was telling her that we knew about her. I knew about her long before I met her because uh Jeremy Towers sings your praises all the time, so I knew about you uh before I met you a little while ago. So it's good to see you up front.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. There you go. Here we go.
So now we'll move from espresso-filled cake to exercise. On Friday, December second, our intramural sports department hosted a fall semester Eagle Trot five-k fun run and walk. Free and open to the public, thirty-one participants challenged themselves to complete the hilly three-point-one-mile course in the fog and the chill. The first ten runners and first ten walkers to complete the course earned a commemorative T-shirt. Once again, youth ruled the day. Pictured top right is Grace Medina, first place female, first place overall with a time of twenty minutes, thirty-eight seconds. That's a six-minute, thirty-eight mile, six-minute, thirty-eight-second mile pace.
I can't even get to my car in twenty minutes.
Pictured bottom left is Andrew Jones, first place male and second place overall. And then lastly, pictured bottom center is third place overall finisher Maggie Casanova. Thank you.
Dean Fisher, where were you?
Taking pictures.
We had, that was a busy Friday, right? We were, uh, there was a gradu-, there was a Police Academy graduation. I've done tried that. I tried to make both of them once in the past, and that was a fail.
Okay, is that it for the pictures? That's it. Okay, sir. That's all I got. I uh tonight, again, if you need to come, I got tickets tonight. And uh the VIP parking will be in the administration parking lot, so ju- just when you pull in, tell the police officer there that you're VIP and who you are, and they'll let you in. We start there at the bell tower. Thanks, sir.
Okay. Item number five is the swearing-in of campus police officer Devon Lemon.
Come forward, please. You've got some people down there, chief, that wanna take pictures? They can come down. Come on down. Come get the pictures. Come on down. We're not having a funeral here. This is supposed to be fun. All right.
He's ready.
He's ready. Hop in there.
Hi, Devon. Good morning, woman.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly, do solemnly swear.
In the firm?
In the firm.
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of police officer?
The duties of the office of police officer.
Central Texas College District.
Central Texas College District.
Of the state of Texas?
And the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
The United States?
Of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
And the rules and regulations?
And the rules and regulations.
Promulgated by the CTC Board of Trustees.
Promulgated by the CTC Board of Trustees.
So where we got it?
So how we got it?
Your official sworn-in and
And don't try to outrun him or outfight him. He's a, he's not a lemon. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
And now what you've all been waiting for with bated breath, we're gonna discuss and consider approval of the annual financial report. The reports that Board of Trustees has prepared by the independent audit firm of Lawton Burnin Company PC for the fiscal year ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Liberty.
Sir, y'all should have this big seventy-six-page document in front of you that you can read at your leisure. I'm sure it'll be a lot of hours of enjoyment. But uh you should also have um what we're commonly referring to now as the Cliff Notes version that Mr. Legg started providing last year, um and it's a synopsis of the key points. And um without further ado, I'll have Mr. Legg come up and he will present uh the audit to you and he will pr- provide the information based upon the Cliff Notes version.
Good afternoon. We have finished another audit. It is completed. As always, there's three opinion letters inside of this report. Uh the first of which is our report based on the financial statements themselves. Like you said, the eighty approximately pages, uh do they qualify for uh general accepted accounting principles? And our our opinion is yes, a clean opinion and a mo- unmodified opinion. Uh when you look at these documents, they are in conformity with general accepted accounting principles. Real quickly on the Cliff Notes, uh the story behind Cliff Notes is last night a board member asked me, "Hey, where's the Cliff Notes?" And I didn't know what he was talking about, and then I realized, oh, yeah, that's my cheat sheet, so. I'm gonna start on page thirteen, if you have the bound copy or the first page of the Cliff Notes. This is your statement of net position for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Identifier number one, your total assets, two hundred and seventy-eight point three million, uh down seven million over last year. Uh your biggest decrease is identifier number two, accounts receivable at fourteen and a half million. It is down fourteen point nine million over last year. If you remember, last year, we recorded the um lost revenue portion of COVID uh money uh from the federal side. Last year, we did not have that receivable this year. And then to compensate that, your cash and investments are up eight million over last year. Your operations brought in ten point three million. Uh you spent one point nine million on capital assets, and then you lost four hundred thousand in the market. Identifier number three, your total liabilities, ninety-four point six million, down ten point five million over last year. Couple of things uh to mention here. Item identifier number four, your accounts payable at two point two million, down about a million over last year. We still had some some payables for the freeze and some ADA compliance issues last year. We don't have that this year. And then identifier number five, our our favorite pension liability and OPEB liability. Your net pension liability at eight point three million is down twelve point two million over last year. Contribution rates uh went up and the uh fund itself did better on the market this year than than previous. And then your net OPEB liability at fifty-four point six million is up one point two million over last year. Health health trend rates continue to go up. Giving us a total net position, identifier number six, hundred and fifty-five point eight million, which is up one point eight million or one percent over last year. As always, I try to make this more true position of the college. Uh so I have taken gasby sixty-eight and seventy-five out of that number. Uh so your net position grows to two hundred and forty-seven million when you take those liabilities and assets out. And then if you look at the number right above it, identifier number seven, your unrestricted net position, commonly referred to as the reserve. When you take that sixty-eight and seventy-five out of that number, it grows to a hundred and ten million uh and is worth fourteen point four months' worth of operating expenditures, equivalizing into a strong financial position for this for this fiscal year. Any questions on balance sheet? Okay, looking at that one percent increase in net position, um on page fifteen of the bound report or your second page of your Cliff Notes, total operating revenues for the district, identifier number one, thirty-seven point four million, down twenty-two million over last year. It sounds like a big number, but bear with me. You're gonna hear this this uh for several of these ad- uh numbers. The main reason is identifier number three. So your general operating revenue is at two point two million, is down nineteen point eight million. Remember last year, uh based on the receivable for the lost revenue side of the COVID money, we recorded it last year. So we don't have that this year. Uh remember, it's coming in for the federal side. And since it is a lost revenue, we moved it into the operating side, which that's where it hits uh for the general operating side. So we don't have that this year. Uh the net effect of it uh cancels each other out in the previous year. Tuition and fees, the only other significant decrease, uh identifier number two, at twenty-six point seven million is down one point nine million or six point seven percent over last year. Total operating expenses, identifier number four, ninety-one point two million, uh down about twenty million over last year. The other side of the COVID lost revenue that we expensed off is identifier number five. So institutional support at nine point one million is down about twenty-two million also. And then identifier number six, to compensate for that, your scholarships and fellowships are actually up four point two million at twenty-six million, uh and that is a increase in the COVID dollars that go directly to the students. Uh that's uh grants increased by four and a half million over last year. Net non-operating revenues, uh identifier number seven, at fifty-five point six million is down nineteen million over last year. The biggest decrease is identifier number nine, your federal revenue, non-operating, uh twenty-four point four million, is down fourteen and a half million because your COVID dollars uh for this year are down over thirteen point six million from from previous. because your COVID dollars for this year are down over 13.6 million from, from previous. And then identifier number eight, your state appropriations are down 3.5 million over last year. And I saw that at just about every college. Which gives us item number 10, that 1.8 million, that is our 1% increase in net position for this fiscal year. Any questions on revenues and expenses? The other two opinion letters deal with the compliance side. There's a nice summary even on page 71, if you just want to flip the page on the Cliff Notes. Commonly referred to as the federal single audit. First section deals with internal controls as it relates to the financial statements themselves. It is an unmodified or clean opinion with no findings. The second part is dealing with the internal controls as it relates to the major federal programs. Also unmodified or clean opinion with no findings. Item number seven identifies your major programs required to be tested this year. We're used to student financial aid cluster. It'll never go away because of the, because of the amount. And then below that, you have all of the CFDA numbers for the COVID side of, of the federal programs. Those will remain major programs as long as you get those funds, no matter what the amount, because the feds have labeled that as a high-risk program. And then flipping the page, item number nine, which goes in the data collection form. Do you qualify as a low-risk auditee? And that answer is yes, and that's important for future grants. Any questions on compliance? Everybody should have a staple copy, board report. I'm required to answer certain questions as an auditor to the board. That's what this report is for. So the first part of it, all of those answers are of a positive nature. Didn't have to get attorneys involved, didn't have difficulties in doing the audit, things of that nature. It also gives me the liberty to mention things that are not required to put into the audit itself or not material or significant enough to put in an audit itself, but enough that I bring it to your attention. Breakdowns and controls, things of that nature that need to be fixed before they end up in the audit. So we do have a comment on the last page of that report for this fiscal year. Looking at the bank reconciliations, and as an auditor, we're real picky on the bank reconciliations. I know Bob, he busts my chops about it sometimes. But it is the first, it is the first line of defense against fraud and misstatements. So you see the wording there, you know, in our sample of bankruptcies we looked at. As far as timing goes, it's a little slower, both on the prep and the review of it than we normally would like to see. So we're highlighting this. I think this also happens a lot recently, just because of the remote work. So you have to reestablish your policies so that, you know, even if somebody's working remotely, they know they only have so many days to get this reviewed. And it's also a documentation issue. So sometimes it is being reviewed, but not being documented that it's reviewed. And I think that, in talking with Bob, I think they've already started on a fix for this. So I don't, I don't anticipate seeing it next year. And it's primarily in the documentation side. I think, I think somebody is reviewing it. It's just, the documentation side for me is, you know, it's black and white. So if it doesn't have a date, you know, that it's been reviewed on a certain date, then I have to say it's not. And I think they are correcting that as we speak. So. Any questions on that? The only other thing to mention, you did go through a pronouncement this year. I didn't mention much of it because it wasn't a real, a huge material amount. We had to change the accounting for leases this year. The old capital and operating leases went away. They basically want you to create a present value for the future payments of your leases and, and put it as a right-of-use asset. And so you would see that on the balance sheet. But I, I need to mention what happens next year. So next year, this year was the leases for copiers, buildings, equipment, and things of that nature. Next year, it's gonna be software for service. So they're gonna put the same stipulations for that as they did this year. And that number will be, will be huge. Because at any governmental entity, software is king. Everything's run by software. So creating those present values is gonna be a, a big undertaking. And you're only gonna do it at the end of the year. You're not gonna do it for monthly financials. You're just gonna do it for the audit. I must mention that the Higher Education Board gave us little guidance on this for this fiscal year. So I can only hope that for 2023, they give us a little bit more guidance because software for service is gonna be a huge undertaking for everybody. Questions? Oh, and I, I'd be remiss in saying that the only other thing hurdle I'll have next year is, I won't have Bob to finish this off. He's been, he's been great to work with, especially at report time. I know he'll be here for, for, for the audit period. But it'll be, it'll be different not seeing him there when I'm trying to get this report done. And I always enjoyed doing that with him. He does a great job. And I can only hope that the next person will be the same way. Any questions? Not, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the hard work and appreciate the timeliness of your report. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Can you change your first name to Cliff?
Cliff, yes, I will.
I'm thank Dane. Dane and his staff do, do a tremendous job. They're extremely knowledgeable. He shared with you about the, the information related to leases. Doug and I, listen, you can read that thing from now till the cows come home, sir, and you really aren't sure if you're doing it right or not. Doug and I bounced it around a million times and sent it to them and said, please help, tell us, is this correct? And they, they are very knowledgeable and very helpful in making that happen. I also want to make sure that you guys remember, and I, you know, my name gets thrown around, but I do about this much of the work. You know, I've got a staff of 40 some odd people that all year long are working hard to make sure that he doesn't have any findings. And to make sure that those numbers all work good. And they don't just work in my area. You know, it all starts, you know, you, you put a requisition on the system and we have rules and regulations in place to make sure that we do everything right. So from the time we get to that requisition to spending the dollars, that we have everything reported properly in the way we're supposed to do it. So there's a lot of people involved. And then the last one to mention is probably the most important, that's Doug. This would not be done without Doug. Doug plays a gigantic role. And on top of that, if you didn't have an internal auditor that did as much as he does and works as well as he does with Lot Vernon, their bill would probably be doubled. So, so that is so valuable to the college and I want to make sure everybody's aware of that. So.
You've heard the report and you've got it for your nighttime reading tonight. But we have to get approval of this back to the State of Texas beginning of the month. So I'll take a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the audit. Any discussion on that motion? All those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Legg. Next item is recommend Oples for upcoming agenda items or announcements by board members and we'll start, Ms. Colleen. Ms. Colleen?
I had a bunch at the beginning of the meeting, but we had such good reporting.
Forgot what it was.
Slipping away. I was telling Mr. Oples, Bill Anderson, the country songwriter, wrote my favorite song, "Slipping Away." So that's the way things been, slipping away.
Item number eight is the proposed meeting dates. Announcement of the workshop is scheduled for Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. And the board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 31st, 2023. And the reason for the week between that is the CCME conference that comes right in the middle. So we'll, we'll have a workshop and two weeks later, we'll have a board meeting. At this point, we'll have an executive session. Mr. Oples, if you'll join us.
Okay.
Okay, we're back in session. Executive session, we have a motion that we need to vote on.
I move we do a budget amendment.
Second.
Motion made in second to do a budget amendment. Any discussion on that motion? All those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And with that, I hope you all have a Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year and hope to see you Friday for the award ceremony. And I know Holly Jordan is gonna have a stellar day there. She always does. If you haven't gone to one, you've missed out on the fun thing. So, see you Friday. We are joined.